...tip fifteen or twenty dollars a month on your credit card. That adds up to significant support for the music you love, and it's very affordable because you pay a little every month. To become a sustainer, go to jazzandblues.org.
This is Christian McBride. You're listening to KJazz 88.1.
I know, I know, you belong to somebody new. But tonight, you belong to me. Although all that we're apart, you're a part of my heart. And tonight, you belong to me. Way down by the stream, how sweet it will seem. Once more, just a dream in the moonlight. My honey, I know, I know, with the dawn that you will be gone. Way down by the stream, how sweet it will seem. Once more, just a dream in the moonlight. My honey, I know, I know, with the dawn that you will be gone. But tonight, you belong to me, just a little me.
I'd like to call the Seal Beach Planning Commission meeting of November 6, 2017 to order. If Commissioner Aguar could lead us in the pledge.
Yes, please stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, thank you, Robin. All right, Ms. Roberts, if you could lead us, or if you could take role.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Gergis.
Here.
Commissioner Aguar.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
All present.
All right, very good. Thank you, Robin. I think before we, if I may, before we get to the approval of the agenda, we do have some new phases here in the Planning and Commission meeting. So, a couple of things. One, I'd like to welcome Victor Gergis, the new Planning Commissioner for District One, and so, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you're here with us. And maybe if you could just give us a word or two?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Ellery Deaton for giving me the opportunity to serve this great community once more, and I appreciate her nominating me and her confidence in me to represent District One. It's been a long time since I've sat up here last, just by way of maybe a little bit of a side note. When I sat here the last time, it was my second term, and I had a second election year baby. And by coincidence, tonight, my daughter-in-law is having her second child as we speak at Memorial Hospital, and I guess things come full circle in that respect. So, in any event, I'm looking forward to working with the members of the commission, and if I can remember how to press the right buttons, it'll all work out great.
The same buttons, Vic.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Victor, and welcome. Also, I would like to take just a moment to, with all my fellow commissioners here, to thank outgoing or former Commissioner from District One, Deb Machin. She was the chair up until the last meeting, and she had been for how long?
Just one term.
Yeah, for like, for like, over a year.
No, she was vice chair.
Oh, she was vice chair?
Before that, I think.
Oh, okay.
She became chair in January.
Okay, so for the past year, but I want, I want Deb, if she's watching on TV, or everyone else here, to say that I do appreciate very much the leadership that she provided to this body and to the community, and she was a terrific chairperson, and I just want to let, I just like that to be said and go on the record.
I second that.
Well, that wasn't official much. Okay, very good. Okay, moving on to regular business. Let's see, approval of agenda by motion of the Planning Commission. This is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commissioner staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any, do the commissioners have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, yes. It just so happens that the very first item of the evening, very first official act tonight happens to be within 500 feet of my existing primary residence, so I'm going to have to recuse myself from the first item of business. I would ask that you reverse the items number three and four, so that we can deal with item four first, and then I can just excuse myself at that point.
Yes, just in case a grandchild is born.
That's right.
Any earlier, so.
Exactly.
Yes, so we'd like to, you're offering to switch the order of three and four, which certainly seems reasonable and seems like a good idea. Does anyone else have any other comments to the agenda? Staff?
No other changes.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. So, we have a movement to approve the agenda, switching items three and four.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so if we could vote? Which one do I do?
I just cleared it.
I just cleared it? Oh, wait, can we vote again? I'm sorry, I haven't learned the buttons yet. This one?
Nothing right.
Yeah, I'm not getting anything.
Yeah, I'm up.
What am I doing wrong? We're going to try to vote one more time.
Now you've got it.
Okay, has everyone voted?
Yes.
Now, Crystal, which one of these buttons do I push to show the vote?
All right, okay, it's on. They're here.
Which one, which, which one do I push? The vote or this one?
The vote.
The vote?
That shows.
Push it, let's see what happens.
There you go.
Everywhere but here. Very good. I'm going to look up here.
Look at that one.
Okay, very good. It passes five minutes. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, this is, no, this is between.
You're good.
It's the one to your left.
This is, this is in between people. You have your own thing, and I have my own thing over here.
All right.
I'm not going to do this.
I see that.
Are we cool?
Yep.
All right, very good. If we have any questions, please feel free to ask Planning staff. They're pretty good at this stuff. Okay, oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission pursuant to the Brown Act. The commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. So, the oral communications period is now open. Would anyone like to speak? Well, seeing no one, the oral communications are closed. Very good. Moving on to consent calendar. Approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes from October 2, 2017. Do I have any comments or motion to the group?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm going to have to abstain on this since I was not part of that meeting.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Gergis.
I move we approve. Second.
All right, thank you. Please vote. All right, let's see if everyone voted. Okay, we have four yeses and one abstain. Thank you very much. Okay, so, the next scheduled matter is reorganization of Planning Commission, election of new chairperson and vice chairperson. So, I'm running this meeting tonight because I am the former vice chair and former Commissioner Deb Machin, she's in order with us. So, I'm just going to open it for anyone who wants to move to nominate anyone for chair of Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Michael Thomas for chairman.
I'll second that.
All right. Any comments or anything anyone want to add? All right, let's vote.
It's unanimous.
It looks like it's unanimous. I am now chair of the Planning Commission.
So officially.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, everyone. I do want to comment and say that I am honored to be your leader until our next vote, our next vote, and I do appreciate the opportunity to better serve the fine community of Seal Beach, which means so much to me. Thank you. Next, we move on, and we vote for vice chair. Does anyone have any motion for a vice chair? Actually, I do. I would like to move for Commissioner Klinger to be vice chair. Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Aguar. All right, so, hearing that, please vote. If everyone has voted, it looks like five nothing. So, the vice chair is Vice Chairman Klinger. Welcome to the leadership of the group.
Thank you.
And I will say that I have enjoyed serving alongside you for the past two years on the spot.
So, I think you have to switch chairs now.
Do we have to switch chairs now, or does it really, maybe next time?
No.
Wait, let's get a legal opinion on this.
Furniture rearrangement at your next meeting, I think.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Otherwise, we have to move the plaque.
All right, okay, so now we are going on to item four in our packet, is going to be the next item, which is conditional use permit seventeen dash four at 311 Main Street. Applicant Scott Levitt. Staff, do we have a report? Director Landavazza.
Planner Steve Fowler will be giving the report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, chairperson and fellow commissioners. Tonight, item four is at 311 Main Street. It's for conditional use permit seventeen dash four to permit a shared parking agreement for the remodel of an existing multi-tenant commercial building and expansion of a nail salon in the Main Street specific plan zoning area. The subject site is located on Main Street, on the west side of the street, just north of Electric. It's surrounded by residential to the west, commercial to the north and east, and open space and a commercial parking lot to the south. The building, the multi-tenant commercial building is a total of 12,179 square feet and provides 35 parking spaces on-site, which is within this blue polygraph. The property is surrounded, is surrounded by those uses. The site currently allows for 12 operators, not 19, as discussed within the staff report. That was a typo. And they have various types of business uses, such as a barber shop, nail salon, restaurant, retail, and various professional businesses. The applicant is requesting to allow the gym suite and nail salon to be reconfigured to allow the addition of three suites. No additional square footage will be added, just internal reconfiguration. The Seal Beach Municipal Code permits approval of a conditional use permit for a shared parking agreement serving more than one use on a site or serving more than one property, and thereby allowing for a reduction of the total number of spaces required. These are the existing and proposed floor plans here. As part of this, Coa Corporation, a traffic engineering firm, prepared a parking study dated October 2017 to evaluate the subject site's parking requirements based on the existing uses in the center, the increased number of the salon stations, and the potential user types of vacant tenant space that is proposed to be reconfigured. The parking study concluded that the center has sufficient on-site parking spaces to accommodate the current uses, proposed increase in salon operator stations, and a mix of retail and non-customer visiting office uses in the vacant spaces. At the highest demand on the site was determined to be on a Friday around noon in July. The firm also did it in July for three days and also in the winter months for three days. This was the highest demand, which was 30 spaces on-site out of the 35 parking spaces provided. The gym required 12 spaces, and the reconfiguration to the new suites require five parking spaces as they will be retail or office non-customer visiting tenants, which require one parking space for 500 square feet. The nail salon is currently approved for nine salon stations, but over the years have added station and is currently has 18 stations within the current configuration. With the relocation of the salon, will be reducing the total down to 12 stations. So, we're going from nine up to 12, but will actually be a reduction of six because they have 18 in there now. With all the reconfigurations and use changes, the site will be able to accommodate the required parking with a total of 35 spaces. At this present time, no correspondence has been received regarding this project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff?
If you are not using shared parking, how many parking spaces would be required?
If we use just our matrix, it's actually 68 parking spaces.
You'd need 68?
Correct.
And you have how many?
We have 35 plus two in lieu.
So, you've got 37, but you would require 68?
That's correct.
Now, how many vacancies still exist?
Currently, right now, the gym, I believe, is the only vacant space.
You only got one vacancy. So, what happens when a new tenant comes in?
When a new tenant comes in, that's what we looked at at the reconfiguration. So, this is the existing layout with the nail salon being located in this area and the gym being located back in this area with the mezzanine area. The applicant is proposing to put a retail space here, the nail salon in this location, and retail or non-visitors-serving office uses back here in the back. So, they, these spaces right here, just these spaces right here, only require five spaces out of the 12 that the gym actually requires. And this one, because they will be reducing it by six salon spaces, will actually reduce it by another six parking spaces. The parking study shows that the parking lot currently is not full with the current uses that are in there.
I drove by it on my way over here. It was full.
On the days that the study was conducted, they were only using 30 parking spaces.
I'm just saying, that might have been when they did it. I drove by it an hour ago. It was full.
So, the reason for change, or for allowing shared uses, I'm assuming is that, you know, if you were a standalone store, you would need all these spaces available to people to use your store, but if you have multiple tenant facilities, then people come and people go, they're using different stores at different times, and so, there's kind of a melding of that. I mean, I'm assuming that's the engineering behind it.
That's, that's correct.
And that's what the code allow, or what the city ordinance allows, correct?
That's why it's, that's why a conditional use permit is required, so that there are conditions that can be imposed. If you look out on the site now, they've already got signs up that restrict parking to customer parking only and limit parking. So, there are things that have already been done on-site, but yes, that is correct, so you can limit what kind of uses can go in there, what mix of uses can go in there, and those types of things, yes.
Sorry, can you clarify something for me? In your report, you mentioned that there was a permit for nine spaces, and then they, at some point, stations, I'm sorry, in the salon, they at some point doubled that on their own. Is there, is there some sort of legal impact there? Did they violate, you said in a permit, you mean an official permit, and then they doubled it? I'm trying to figure that part out.
According to their business license, the nail salon within the Main Street specific plan is only required to have a business license. It doesn't require any type of discretionary application. So, yes, over the years, it's, I don't want to say that it's common, but it is kind of common that unfortunately, some of these nail salons or hair salons will sometimes add an additional space, and that's why we tried to do, we've implemented a condition, or certificate of occupancy, so that we can make sure that all of these are being kept as to what is on record.
And what kind of impact would that have on the spaces? So, that's now, it was 18 employees and then 18 customers presumably, so like, that's 36 right there just for that one business, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, is this new reduction to 12, is that approved? Is that a, something that, or as you explained, that doesn't matter, they just do it on their own?
Well, what we are, what we are looking at is, that's a part of this application, is that because currently, right now, they're only approved for nine stations, with the, with the parking agreement, they're asking that they be allowed to have three more, which in the scope of things is actually a reduction from what they currently have, that they're actually utilizing those types of parking spaces now.
Okay.
Because under the count, they had 18 stations. So, now, they'll be less by six.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions of staff?
I just wanted, this, this is pretty much the same as it has been, correct? There have been a shared part, there's been a shared parking agreement here? No.
They've been, the parking agreement itself is new. The required parking that's been out there, it was just built that, it was built under those requirements, and it allowed it to be built with 35 parking spaces.
How many, how many parking spaces in back that are designated for those, for what, is employees or customers?
All of these parking spaces that are in the rear right here are either. They're, they're not designated as employee or.
Are they part of the, part of the?
It is part of the equation.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's see, we want to open this for public comment right now. Am I doing this right? So, I'm opening, opening this item for public comment. Is the applicant here or anyone else who would like to speak? Please approach.
Thank you, sir. My name is Scott Levitt on behalf of the applicant. I represent the landlord of this project, not any individual tenant. I'll disclose my office is within this building, so I do know the parking situation very well for any questions that you might have on a daily basis. Also, I know the building well and its use over the last five years I've been in this building. So, thanks to the planning department, Chris and Steve have done a great job in presenting sort of what's going on here. I know it seems a little confusing if you haven't looked at these site plans before, but basically, the gym's a very large space in this building. It's about 3,600 square feet, and it's parked at a three-to-one ratio. That's the code here in Old Town Main Street for gym use. That gym use is continuous, it's going on, there's a current active permit for it. So, if we eliminate 3,600 square feet of gym use, a three-to-one ratio, and we fill it up basically with those two rear offices, that front office, and a 238-foot hallway that's actually reducing the rentable square foot, at the end of the day, you have less square feet being rented to tenants than you currently have. And that sort of explains how there is going to be actually one less parking space needed with the reconfiguration. The site itself is underparked, there's certainly no debate about that. I think it requires 68 spaces as it sits. That is grandfathered in usage, meaning that gym's active right now, this site requires 68 spaces, it's how it was built, no one can take that away from the site. What we're just planning on doing is reducing that usage of the gym, reconfiguring it, and so technically, it will require one less space of being underparked than it is in its current configuration, and 238 square feet of less rentable space. And then, I think, as you probably know, the parking requirements really don't take into account it being a local sort of area where people want to get their nails done, or they walk over to visit the Edward Jones or the Espry Company there. And Commissioner Campbell, you did mention that that lot, sort of when you drove by, is full. I would concur, it probably was full when you drove by, but if you drove down the alley, seven of those spots are actually reserved spots for the tenants themselves, so those are usually empty. I work seven days a week, that lot's empty every Saturday and Sunday when I go to work. So, there's plenty of parking on the weekend. Really, the parking that you see there is violators parking in that lot every day who are actually just going to other businesses. They're using it as a public parking lot currently. And so, I'm here to sort of answer, you know, any sort of technical questions about the building itself only because I'm so familiar with that building. But technically, we are actually reducing the number of feet to rent to prospective tenants. There is a gym vacancy, and then just two weeks ago, Old Coastal Real Estate Office moved out, which is a 500-square-foot unit in that building.
All right, do you have any questions to the applicant?
During the day, besides the signage, is there any sort of oversight on the parking lot to make sure that there's not public usage as well as?
Yeah, so, it's sort of a catch point, too. So, we have tollway signs there, we have signs that say only for people going to this building, but technically, you'd really have to have someone out there 12 hours a day monitoring that flow of cars. It's sort of unfortunate because it's almost like that lot is being used for simple public parking. So, as tough as it is for us as tenants in that building to see people taking up our parking, at the same time, that parking is being used to help the city overall, to the detriment of a private property owner. So, again, the only way to enforce it would be for someone to literally follow the people as they get out of their cars to see if they entered that building.
But at this time, you don't have any monitoring, like a person that you hired.
That's right. So, if so many parts of my spot, I called the tolling company, I have their car towed.
In your personal spot?
That's right, and there's seven of those, basically.
Okay. So, if I get this right, select nail house is actually adding square footage but decreasing the number of stations?
Yes, so, the nail house was approved for nine stations. I've never really gone in the nail house, so I've never, ever came close.
We don't judge, there's a lot of guys in there.
Yeah, I just personally never have. When I go to that building, I'm simply there working, but, so, I understand there was inspection today, they have more stations than what's approved for, but yes, we are just requesting 12 stations in the reconfigured situation. And I, and I think technically, that's just going to become a condition of approval and already drawn out in the conditions of approval of the resolution.
In theory, that can become 24 in the next few years.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, if I represent a restaurant, and you say, hey, do they really only have 26 chairs in that, I have no idea. And so, that, but it's the same thing, like, for a restaurant. If they added another table and chairs, they'd literally be doing the same thing.
Gotcha. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Levitt.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this topic? No, okay. To do, okay, I'm going to close the hearing period on this particular item and ask commissioners any questions, comments, anything you'd like to throw out there.
This conjures memories of in lieu parking.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I can clearly remember the days when there were nothing but hair salons on Main Street. So, we've come a long way. My, if I can, my feeling on this is that, is that it is within the, permitted within the code, and it actually represents a reduction in intensity as far as I can tell. Clearly, enforcement, both from the standpoint of parking usage and on-tolling station count would be helpful. That's something that, you know, either the landlord or the city, perhaps through its business license operations should keep a closer look at. But overall, I think the request is reasonable, and therefore, I would be willing to support it.
Very good. Do we have a move for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right, if we could all vote, please. And it is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Levitt, and congratulations. All right, so, we're going to excuse Commissioner Gergis. Did I say that right?
Gergis.
Gergis.
I'm sorry, you wouldn't be the first to...
We're going to excuse you and thank you again for joining us. Uh, we are very glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good. So, uh, yes.
Oh, you can't take the waters with you.
Commissioner Gergis has, uh, is recusing himself from this item because of where he lives, as we earlier stated. So we are moving on to item, what is now three, uh, which is a request for minor use permit to allow removal and reconstruction of a porch and the addition of an access, accessibility ramp. The street-side setback on a property that is duplex and is non-conforming due to setbacks, parking, and density in the residential high-density zoning area, two forty-nine Sixteenth Street. Mr. Fowler, do we have a report?
Say that again? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I should... Ms. Landavazza, do we have a, a report on this?
Planner Fowler will be presenting this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so this evening, the site location is at the southwest corner of Sixteenth and Landy. That's within the Old Town area. As you can see, it's surrounded by residential uses. The site is developed with a duplex with a, uh, three-car garage at the rear. Um, this site is non-conforming as it has one single-family, uh, dwelling unit at the front, about nine hundred and fifty square feet, with a second dwelling unit above the three-car garage at the rear, which is about another, a little over nine hundred square feet. The, uh, site is also non-conforming due to, um, a side yard setback here, which is less than the three feet nine inches, it's only, uh, two foot six. We do have a four-foot side yard setback here, a six-foot, which is required to be five foot eight because it's a street-side setback, and a front yard setback of twelve feet for the front, which is what is required. And the rear is actually also non-conforming as it's, uh, the alleyway is only twelve foot wide and the setback is only eleven foot six inches. Because of this, due to the non-conforming status, the minor use permit is required for any exterior alterations such as a porch and the ramp. As you can see, this is the existing layout and the existing porch goes right in line with the existing walls that were, um, um, here on the house, so they're all in line, just as this new porch would be. It also goes along this, these same walls. Uh, the, the major change is this accessibility ramp that comes up along this sidewall, which is only twenty-two inches high, and, um, they altered this so that the ramp could actually turn in here so that it could get into the, um, to the residence. So as I said, this existing porch is a hundred and ten square feet and the new porch will also be a hundred and ten square feet. These are the elevations, so as you can see, it, it goes up, the ramp goes right up to the, uh, front door. Um, there's a little alteration, instead of it having a gabled roof, it is going to have a small little parapet over the top of the, um, um, porch area. And that would be about the only change, uh, to the exterior other than that ramp. No correspondence has been received regarding this project, and with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fowler. Uh, do we have any questions of staff from commission? No, okay. Uh, let's see, moving on, so now we will open up the, uh, this particular item for public comment, uh, is now open. Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here. Uh, would anyone like to say anything regarding this item? All right, then, just can we say hi? Public comment period is now closed. Okay, uh, commissioners, does anyone have any, uh, any, uh, anything to add or comments? Questions?
I think we can go ahead. I'd like to know that we approve it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Aguirre.
Seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Uh, if we could vote, please? And the answer is four-two-zero, it passes unanimously with one abstention.
Abstention.
Thank you, Robert. All right, very good. Okay, uh, very good, that's all our, uh, everything we need to act on tonight, so...
Mr. Schamow, I see the note on, on, uh, that I, on both of these items, actually, the ten-day appeal period begins to run tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, City Attorney Steele. Uh, okay, so if we get back to the regular agenda, I'm sorry, forgive me one second. Director's report. Do we have a director's report?
I have no items tonight except, uh, notification that the next planning commission meeting will be canceled, so the second meeting in November will be canceled.
Okay, so the next time we intend to meet will be the first week in December. Okay, first Monday in December. Thank you, Crystal. Um, let's see, do we have any commission concerns?
I have a question, I don't know, and actually, I haven't checked lately, and this is probably Mr. Fowler can answer this. Were, were the, um, old meters removed from the parking lot on, uh, uh, over by the Shell Shop or the, the, right off of Main Street here? There was a, there was new electronic meters put in and the old ones are there with socks over them? I just wouldn't have wondered if those had been removed yet.
Mr. Chair, I think I may be able to. Um, community development isn't involved in that program, but I've been to some of those meetings. Um, my understanding is that there was a pilot program in all of the city lots on Main Street, and there was an extension of that program in all of the lots except for, um, the, um, lot on Main Street, adjacent to actually the three-eleven Main Street property. I think those old meters are going back in because that pilot program is done.
Okay.
And the others, I believe, have been extended either to the end of this month or...
So the meters will stay for now while you're trying out?
They're, they're still in place for now, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, be good. Anything else?
No.
Patty, Marianne? All right, uh, I think that's it. This meeting of Planning Commission Seal Beach is now adjourned. Thank you.